Do you have an idea?
No.
Tom gave us some books in the seat.
Okay, all right, we'll start the work session. Kevin, you want to give us a little overview?
Well, I think one of the reasons why this was called was because I think about a month ago, Steve, we mentioned something about a moratorium. And I think you wanted to get the planning board's input on whether or not you're your favorite moratorium and we need to discuss the parameters of that moratorium, you have to test local law. I think you also just pointed out dates on the project that we're working on.
Well, we were concerned about the setbacks on this KSH and some other projects. But I think that was in the pipeline already, so it might be, I don't know, if we can do anything retro.
No, these are, almost all the applications right now are basically preliminary. They are in the secret process, they have not had any kind of negative debt issue, they have not had any kind of preliminary approvals issue, so basically everything that's before us right now is
It's open game.
It's really, there's a lot of sketch plans, a lot of it is still sketch plans.
Walt did a little research on this, but Walt, you want to talk about special exception in that zone? You want to talk about that specifically or other projects?
It's up to you, I mean...
We're definitely concerned about the buffer there and other issues, so.
So, I guess that's the one that's got the most attention because it's proposing approximately 300,000 square feet of warehousing along the two office buildings. This is the old Alden Link property, it is, that has been zoned I-1 since before I became your attorney, 30 years ago. I think when I moved in here in the village in 1985, it was still I-1, I don't know how long, maybe till the 60s, it was I-1. As was the Chambelane area, which was also I-1 until you did the special district. So, it's I-1, I think things have been changed over the years, there's potentially some, you move in some owner's users, such as like landfills and...
Inno-oryns.
Inno-oryns, and I think...
Quarries.
Quarries.
Yeah, some sort of, yes, the things that were really objectionable to everybody. And over the years, I think we added warehouse as a special exception use permit. So, it requires both a special permit, this particular application requires also a subdivision, there's going to be three lots, one lot would be the two office buildings, one lot would be a proposed 200,000 square foot, really spec warehouse, and the other would be 100,000 square foot warehouse, which the owner has said he wants to use at least half of it.
I heard 90.
For his, for his, yeah, well, it's up to about 100 now. So, he, he wants to move his business from Cornwall into the... Sorry? Yeah, sort of like a recreational type, recreational type of equipment and stuff like that.
Right.
So, what the planning board did was they heard from the owner, he's represented by Engineering Properties, they'll commit submitted into original sketch plan that showed instead of two office buildings, it showed senior housing on that third lot, which would enter off of 211, right near the car wash.
Subject to DOT approval.
Well, yeah, DOT had some objections to the width of that particular 50-foot right-of-way for the proposed use, and so this board amended the zoning law to remove that overlay, the senior overlay, out of this 211 corridor, and required it strictly to the 211, to 17K corridor.
That's 17K.
Yeah, no, if you move it from the 211 corridor and it still stays in the 17K corridor, we have the existing senior housing on 17K. So then the owner came back and proposed two office buildings, office uses instead of the senior housing. Those office buildings are permitted uses in the industrial zone, unlike the warehouse, which is special permit uses. There has been, I think, some confusion about what exactly a special permit use is. I know the planning board isn't, they've been dealing with these things for years and years and years. So, I was speaking to Walt over the last couple of days, and I think he asked me to be prepared to maybe discuss the difference between a permitted use, a special permitted use, prohibited uses, and various, various ideas, so. I think, I guess the best way to start with this would be that the Village of Montgomery gains its right to do zoning through the state law, there's enabling statutes, which is the village law, as well as the municipal home rule law, which allows you to enact local laws to govern your affairs. The village law allows you to establish planning boards, and allows you to give the planning board the powers to grant subdivision approvals, site pen approvals, special permit uses, and here's your fourth member. And you have done that, you did that, again, way before my time, where this village board, not this sitting board, but previous village board, gave that power to the planning board. So, just to take it straight here, the state law, which is the village law, section 7, there, 725B, says the definition of a special permit. "Special permit shall mean an authorization of a particular land use, which is permitted," and that's a very big word there, "permitted in the zoning local law, subject to requirements imposed by such a local law, to assure that the proposed use is in harmony with such local law, and will not adversely affect the neighborhood if such requirements are met." And it says, "Further, the approval of special use permits that the village board trustees may, and you have done this as part of a local zoning law, authorize the planning board or such other administrative body that it shall designate to grant special permits as set forth in such local law." Some communities have special permits issued to the zoning boards, some maintain it in the village board, many do it the way you deal with, which is the planning board. So, the first thing I want to make sure that everybody understands is that it is a permitted use subject to certain conditions that would be outlined in the local law of the village, that the planning board would have to determine or met by the applicant. It is not a variance, it is not a prohibited use, it's a permitted use subject to conditions.
What about height?
Height is subject, okay, the height itself is not a special condition, it's just a general regulation of the village code to that particular zone, the I-1 zone, and right now, this project does not violate that.
No, but I mean, could the, could the planning board lower the height?
No, the planning board cannot lower the height. There's two choices, if the applicant wanted to go higher than the zoning law allows, he could ask this board to amend the zoning to allow it to go higher, or he could seek a variance from the zoning board's views. So, to continue, Steve, the state law also says that the authorized board, which in this case, the planning board, shall have the authority to impose such reasonable conditions and restrictions as are directly related to and incidental to the proposed special use permit. Upon its granting of said special use permit, any such conditions must be met in connection with the issuance of permits by applicable enforcement agents or officers of the village. So, in other words, the planning board decides that the applicant meets these special conditions that it sets, those are then enforceable by your building inspector, code enforcement office, or whatever, that those, those conditions continue to be met throughout the existence of that particular project. Now, subject to that enabling statute, the village passed its zoning law way back in probably the 50s, and so what we have today, if you look at the zoning law today, again, I want to emphasize that this is a special permit use, but it also is a permitted use. So, if you look at the definition of the zoning of our local zoning code, a use in one or more districts which the planning board may grant a permit, subject to provisions of 12247, which I'll get to in a second. And then on the 1224, the use regulations, it says, "A special exception use authorized by the planning board for lawfully existing at the effective date of this chapter or any amendment thereto, effectance such as shall be deemed a conforming use." Again, very important that it's a conforming use, not a non-conforming use, which is what variances are. And then the big one is 12247, which is special exception use permits. So, your code says, "The planning board shall have original jurisdiction," and others, they're the first one and the only ones that really can actually grant this permit, "the power to grant a permit for a special exception use on a particular site, wherever it expressly provided in this chapter that the special exception use may be granted upon application to the planning board, without finding a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship, but subject to the general provisions of this chapter, and more specifically to the guiding principles, general standards, and the special conditions and safeguards contained in this section." In other words, if you're going to, before they can grant a special permit, they have to find that the use proposed meets A, the guiding principles, and B, the standards and/or special conditions for a specific, a specific use of the property, in this case warehouses. So, your code now allows warehouses as a special exception use permit, it has to get site plan approval, it's going through that process right now, it's still in the, really, it's almost like sketch plan because there's going to be changes to this, most recently, last, last week it was. The engineer said that the fire code requires separate access roads for the two warehouses. You can't have one road going in and splitting, it has to be two separate roads going in because of the size of the buildings proposed. So, they're going to have to come back with a proposal that would meet the fire code. But in the meantime, if you, again, I don't want to bore everybody, but if you look at the guiding principles of 12740, 12247A, and then the general standards of 12247B, you'll see all of the conditions that the planning board must determine or met before they can grant a special permit for a warehouse. There's also a section called "Special Conditions and Safeguards for Special Exceptional Use Permits," that's section C of 12247, and that lists specific uses such as airport, bed and breakfast, and the like. There is a section on warehouses, but it only applies to warehouses in a B-1 district, and this is, this is not a B-1 district, it's an I-1 district. So, we wouldn't even go with those, but certainly, I think it's, I want to make sure that it's clear that the planning board is right now doing all of its due diligence to make the applicant comply with everything that needs to be complied with, not only the site plan regulations, not only the subdivision regulations, but also the special permit regulations.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, so again, and what we, and what the planning board did was, they have asked the applicant to do a, what they call a extended long-form environmental assessment.
I was going to say, this could be a type 1 action here too, because of the size.
Well, it doesn't qualify, it still doesn't qualify as a type 1 under the secret regulations, it's still an unlisted action, but nevertheless, if there were significant environmental impacts, the planning board could require a full DEIS/FEIS process. They did not believe at the point of time when they first got this application that that was necessary, if they expanded the EAF, and they have done that. And they looked at all of the major issues, such as traffic and drainage, the federal wetlands, the airport being nearby, which, by the way, we still haven't heard from the county planning department about the flight plan.
I don't know if this is in the flight plan.
It probably isn't, it's probably far enough away that it will not be in that flight path, but we wanted to get that verification from the county planning department. And of course, the applicant has to, we told the applicant, they have to apply to the FAA and clear it with the FAA, which is obviously the federal oversight for the airport. So, with that in mind, I just wanted to lay that out for the board, I think the planning board has been doing this for years, they've been doing this all along.
Let me say a couple things before we defer to Walt, because Walt's done a lot of research on this. I've said all along, this project concerns me more than Medline, to be honest with you. It's in the village, you know, truck traffic will be right here, the size, and residents in the neighborhood, I expressed to you a long time ago, way back in, I don't know, the city of Warren, it was first, I think, public hearing. You know, it's just the buffering, I mean, you can make them, or ask them, I should say, or make them, have a 50-foot buffer with trees and mulch, you know, 30-foot high almost, too. There's a lot of things you can do, but it's just, you know, if we're not, if it's not too late out of the gate, maybe we should consider the moratorium now, because the height concerns me too, even though it's not in the flight path. I'm just putting my concerns out before, because Walt's, Walt's done a lot of work on this.
Well, I think what Kevin is looking to say... Your minus ICU is, since you're almost at the point where you're completing the master, comprehensive plan update, we just wait for the county planning to come back with this material, we still haven't heard from them. Once, if you would put a moratorium in effect, my recommendation would be that you include all business industrial uses, as well as...
I-2, I-1, I-2, and B-2?
I-1, I-1, I-2, B-1, B-2, and maybe even the RM-1 district, because you have a couple of projects for multiple family housing that you may want to look at, and so I'll say. But it would be a fairly short moratorium, since you, I'm expecting that you're going to, once you get the county planning's review, that you're going to approve the comprehensive plan update, you'll finish the secret process, which really is a pro forma aspect, because it's only an update of what was already done 10, five years ago, seven years ago now. And then you could start going right into adopting local laws to amend your zoning or do all the things that are recommended by that comprehensive plan.
Kevin, how long can we make a moratorium, as soon as we can go?
Well, I think that the general practice is six months with the option of renewing it. Some are shorter, some are three months, and they do three-month increments, because again, you're affecting people's property rights, so you want to make sure that if it was, you know, I think, because you're at the end of your process of your update, that you don't necessarily need a six-month moratorium. Whereas if you were beginning the process, I would say probably at least six months, probably more like a year, and you probably figure it's going to be extended, most... The history of those things are that you may start at six months, but you end up being 12, 18, 24 months, and when those moratoriums are back.
Like the I-2 on Riverwood Avenue, I'm thinking, you know, you're limited for space there, so you're really not talking much, but here you have a lot more land for buffering.
Right, but I think, again, comprehensively, I think what you would want to do is you would want to look at those districts, and that I just mentioned before, to see whether or not there should be changes to your zoning code that would affect any of the developments in those districts. Now, you can always say, well, projects that are at final approval, I know they usually cut off as a direct environmental impact statement, most of the projects that are before the planning board are not at that stage right now, that aren't even close, but certainly, you can certainly cut off, and you can actually put a moratorium effect that would cover, so you can actually look at all of your zoning laws, and see whether you want to change regulations, and it could be specifically in specific zones, or it could be more so to the general code areas, we were talking about height, lot line size, buffers, drainage, steep slopes, lot coverage, any number of things you could look at, and you may want to look at as part of that zoning law to complement what you just, you know, completed with the...
The case in point is that a building across from ShopRite, which is, you know, it's really high up, and it's, you know, I mean, we're dealing with residences...
Likely, I mean, they're a piece of, they're...
You save it for the regular session, we'll let you talk about that.
Kevin, if we put, I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
Yeah, I just want to say a couple more things, because I kind of lost my train of thought, but, I mean, the height is, you know, and I know, you know, this developer's buying the property in good faith, and he wants, you know, within the zoning confines, but he's being very aggressive here. I mean, we took out the residential component, and now he's sticking in the commercial. And there's a lot of wetlands, if I recall, toward the front of that property, closer to 211.
That's why this project is two entrances proposed, one is for the, down there, the car wash, because the wet, the whole center of that property is wetland, it's sort of wetland, so they can't cross those wetlands very easily. Plus, the former owner actually filled some of the wetlands, so they have to take that into consideration as to what they also fill, because they can't exceed 1/10 of an acre. They were proposing, under the current plan, about, and it was by 0.9 acres, 0.09 acres, I should say, so they took it to be under, until our engineer told them that you need to have a separate access road, which they now are saying might come through from, from the access for the office building across the wetlands, I don't know how they're going to do that.
Yeah, but there's a whole host of...
So, this is a bunch of issues.
Yeah, I could refer, I could refer for a whole well field, I mean, to recharge the whole line yards, but I mean, it's a whole quality of life issue, it's something that size. People had a fit when Target was looking to go there, but that was on the Heffords property as well, I think it was 800,000 square feet, and it's just mammoth, and it's just going to change the whole quality of life, and I, I'll say, you know, it's worse than, much worse so than Medline in my estimation, but that's only my opinion, I'm sure there'll be counteropinions to that. But I think we should try to do this right away, we've talked about it for a while, just to take pause and assess.
Right, and I think that because you are at the end of your update process, the actual moratorium just gives you that, that breathing room to adopt it, and then get into your zoning laws, and again, you can always extend it, so if you want to start with three months, and go to, you know, and then extend it to another three, I can imagine that if everything goes according to the boil, that you adopt the plan, and it shouldn't take you more than a couple of months to come up with some zoning changes that you would be satisfied with, that you can act right away, and then go forward, but if it takes longer, it takes longer. Now, every moratorium has built-in within it exceptions for people who suffer hardships, you would be the, would determine whether or not those hardships are qualified to get an exemption from it. But again, most of the projects that are before the planning board are at sketch plan, or slightly beyond sketch plan, they're not at a point where they're near approval.
What hardships could they say?
Well, obviously, if they bought a piece of property for a lot of money, they bought it with the expectation of a better development, now you're stopping the development.
Like what a motorhome, if gas goes up to $10 a gallon, do people pay for it? I'm not going against you, I'm just...
Well, that's, yeah, you have to remember, you're acting as a, you're acting as a public entity, okay? And so the public entity has a different standard of, than a private entity.
But this is the public.
No, no, you are, I'm just saying, you act on the color of law, you cannot just willy-nilly this term, you have to have a reason for what you do.
Yeah, I know, but it's just a hardship, I see.
I think we have to be careful, because when the town had that moratorium a bunch of years ago, and the Village of Goodwill was looking to build and all that, and the town ended up paying $600,000 to Jacobowitz.
They ignored Judge's ruling, they ignored Judge Peter Passlos' ruling, we're not ignoring the ruling, what we're doing is just making sure...
I agree, I agree, I'm certainly in favor of it. I mean, really, at the end of our master plan process, one of the things that we looked at is, here's the zoning, we had, we had talked about the map, and if anybody wants to look at it, there's the I-1, the I-2, and what's, you know, what's permitted, and what's special exception, and that's really the key part, is the special exception, as to what can be done and how we can deal with it. You know, over the years, that property, when I was on the planning board 15, 20 years ago, when Alden Link came in with a project that was 400,000 square foot manufacturing space, with a second floor, a helipad, and two 50-foot towers for manufacturing. And again, that would have been a permitted use, not even a special exception use, because it was a manufacturing site, and manufacturing is in the upper bracket. So, I got together with Kevin, and so we've now created an ongoing permanent committee for the master plan review, and part of it is to look at our zoning, and to make recommendations to the board, and see what needs to be repaired, what needs to be fixed, and make those recommendations. Because again, you know, we have a couple of big pieces, they have their property, again, at one time, Target was going to go there, that would have been really ugly, and we have other pieces of property that, that are right now, you know, just kind of beautiful, one of them is Skip Chambers' property. You know, that's a, that's a huge piece of non-residential property, and at some point, something's going to happen with it, and I think we should look at it now and come up with ideas that, you know, we could even talk to Skip about it, or we can talk to Rowley that owns the old Presell-Obea. You know, what can be done now that would be palatable for everybody, and give us growth? And one of the things I looked at with the Alden Link, with the KSH property, is I checked with the assessor's office, that property right now is assessed at $130,000. It pays $2,000 a year in village taxes. And when I talked to the assessor, and I said, "Just out of a point of reference, if you're going to build a warehouse, you know, what would you assess?" And he said, "Well, kind of rule of thumb is $105 a square foot is the cost of putting up a warehouse, $90 a square foot for an office building." So, you can kind of do the math, if they were to do exactly what's on the drawing board right now, you'd have an assessed value that would be in the tens of millions. And again, with the, you know, very nice in terms of tax revenue, but again, I think we have to do it all smart, and that's really the key to making this happen.
Right, and the goal on the whole is saying too, is like, you know, in the master plan, and we're talking about subcommittees, and there are eight, you know, I bring up the 87 recommendations that were forthbacked in 2010. One of them was to create a planned business park, floating zone that can be applied to the I-1 industrial zone district. So, what that would do is would give you kind of the flexibility for what you do with the PDD, you use that as a tool to create something down there to bring in the tax revenue, like you say, and not have, you know, increase the size of the village with homes and residents and school kids, that is what raises our taxes. So, you know, having that flexibility and having the group look at that would be an appropriate thing. I will say though, that, you know, when you did talk about the industrial zones, there's some people on the subcommittee that are, that own the industrial zones, so there's a lot of interest there.
But again, but it's good to have that.
Especially when you start talking about setbacks, making a little bit less property you can build on. So, it's a situation I really think you should take into consideration, is that who you put on the subcommittees, and make sure it's a diverse group of people, young, old, you know, all different physical...
It's a delicate situation.
Oh, that's an...
We tried to do this, I mean, 28, no, over 30 years ago, Ward was talking about Townsville being the only part of the village, and people came in and swarmed, they were ticked off, like, "You don't want, you know, you cut our property in half, our investments have been paying taxes for years." Same thing with Skip, you know, these guys, they've property, they've been in business 150 years plus, you know, so...
Right, but I think...
So, it's a balancing.
Yeah, it's a balancing, and I think everybody's upset about this KSH property, but I think you have to look at it from a comprehensive village point of view. This is not, you cannot target one property, a moratorium, or for zoning changes, whatever it might be, I think you need to look at the districts and the village as a whole pursuant to that comprehensive plan update, and look at your zoning from that very practical point of view, and get stakeholders, I mean, the people who own those properties, you should hear from them, they have a right to be heard about them, but then at the same time, you want to hear from everybody else, but you want to find out what's the best fit for the Village of Montgomery, and what will also keep the village sustainable, I mean, you don't want, maybe some people do.
Well, we want ratables, definitely.
You want ratables to keep your taxes down, and don't impact schools, so you have to, you have to find that balance, and the moratorium would give you that breathing room, again, I don't, it's up to you, you can start with six months if you want, but I think that you...
Six months, six months to see where we get, we need to extend.
Always end it early, if you get the zoning enacted that you want, you don't have to keep it full six months.
Could the, could the property owner take action against this, and say, "We're changing the rules during the game"?
Well, you have, well, putting a moratorium effect is not changing the rules, okay?
But we're changing, we're...
Well, yeah, well, yes, again, that's why I'm saying you have to look at it from a comprehensive point of view, not targeting any particular properties, but looking at the zoning for the entire village, looking at all of the big impact developments, and say, "What's the investment to the Village of Montgomery? Do we want to, what do we want to change, you know, do we want to change anything?", versus, if we do, what do we want to change? That's a fair game, and again, people, companies have challenged moratorium, they don't usually win as long as they're reasonable, and then not go on forever.
True.
Okay, I mean, I've got my...
Well, Walt, yeah, because with a moratorium, you have to find a way to alleviate that moratorium in a sense, whether it's sewage or whatever, you have to, you can't, you can't go on forever.
Well, I think, no, absolutely not. Well, I think, no, absolutely not, and I, when you get, and I've seen it happen, again, in case law, when you get past two years, well, you are really pushing it. And I, and that's when you start finding potential liability in the part of municipality because they've extended it. And again, that's why I'm saying you're not at the beginning stages of a comprehensive plan review, you are at the end stages of it, so you shouldn't need more than six months.
So if we did a six month moratorium, put in what we wanted, the whole village, not just one person, the whole village, then we can release it?
Yeah, I don't think you want to necessarily stop seeing whatever senior facilities we have going up, I don't know if you wanna stop that.
I don't think you're many anymore.
And 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 you have projects that are already at final approval and have signed plans, I don't know if you want to affect them necessarily. But certainly, you wanna look at the ones that are presently coming and and how that's gonna affect the overall village, I mean, that's.
Just like the I two on Railroad Avenue, I mean, some of us were opposed to any residential, I wasn't opposed to all residential as long as it was a B two. I mean, Darlene and I recused ourselves from that conversation, but um, I think all warehouses on Railroad Avenue wasn't necessarily a good idea either, and that's what's allowed for the most part with some, some of the other exceptions, but.
But see, but those warehouses, offices still be allowed in these zones, but maybe the lot coverage or something else changes. That doesn't allow them to put as dense a development as is presently proposed, or setbacks change, so you have to have larger setbacks. So that shrinks the actual development, I think, it's still have a warehouse, but it would be fifty thousand square feet instead of a hundred thousand square feet, something.
Well, that's what kind of the master plan committee and the additional master plan committee that Walt's involved with, you know, can look at. I mean, it it just, it's scary to be going Weaver Street especially, I mean, I grew up with trains in my backyard, four cars on my side door. And tractor trailers going down the front, you know, on the street in front of the yard, so, you know, I was used to it growing up. It's kind of a shock when, even though the property was owned, allowed a lot of that for years, now it's just, uh, it's even more scary, so. Um, how soon can we enact this six month moratorium?
It's the first meeting, it's the first meeting, I think, seventeen?
Yes, yes.
I will have a, I can, I can prepare a draft of law for you at that point, Tom, for introduction, to review and introduce it, if you want. And if it acted, you can enact it at the APO meeting.
That's the budget meeting, but that's okay, but you guys okay with that, or we just wanna add some things to it?
I'm, I'm fine with it, especially because I'm on the master plan of subcommittees as well, I think you're gonna need at least six months to delve into all eighty seven things. Some of them are very big items on there, um, especially when you talk about, you know, Paul saying the permitted uses, setbacks in industrial zone areas, um, you know.
But not all eighty seven items in that comprehensive zoning.
Right, there are a lot of parts of the issues, but there are, there's a, there's quite a few of them there about, you know, and there's probably about twelve or fourteen of them in there for that.
Well, some of them we're not gonna do for a long time, you know, the zoning we might do, but not the, you know, the wish lists in the, in the master plan.
Right, but things like building on.
It's a little.
I know, too, but but those are, again, those are planning, you know, planning issues, if you had Golden Streets, you know, we, we all the stuff, we know, but.
The DPO is doing the granite curtain last week in this street too, which is great, saves a lot of money, but they don't always have the time.
And I think it's a good idea that we just stop and pause, like you said, because the piecemeal aspect of it puts us at risk, and I think there are a number of properties that we need to take a look at down the line that um may be sold. And we need to take a look at how we're gonna have them developed, and I mean, that's why we have comprehensive planning.
I think that's what the town is doing, because it's so much so fast. Billion and a million three foot square foot warehouse, not to mention all the other warehouses, so it's just.
Well, I mean, we are in a, I mean, we are in that corridor.
Right.
And that's the reality of it.
Of the northeast transportation, and that's attractive, I mean, the Orange County IDA is looking more at some high tech jobs and things like that too, so. But also consider the airport on that, on that area out there too, because the airport is gonna develop, whether there's an airport, I mean, a motel at the airport eventually. And other development, especially if water comes from the town down to the airport, so.
I think, and I think that, well, right, the town of Montgomery doesn't really have a master plan, correct?
I don't think it has one.
They don't have one, so like, we're, we're farther ahead because we have a twenty ten master plan that you already approved. We have a five year update plan that's for you guys, you're gonna more likely approve, once the county planner gets back with comments, so we'll be set to go. And it seems like a reasonable thing to do is to, you know, to look at all these things. And I appreciate you getting involved with this, and, you know, weighs on us.
Quick work session, we haven't been working, we don't have to start the regular meeting until seven thirty, so.
I think we can talk about other things now.
Yeah, I know, if you wanna, I don't, I don't, the, the village boys totally aware of all of the projects that we call the planning, we have quite a few. You have the KSH, you have the Boy Street warehouse, and the um, there's a proposal for an additional warehouse on Boy Street.
By across from the post office, so.
Yes, yes, yes.
That'll be along, that'll be along the railroad tracks.
Distanced to the already existing warehouse.
Twenty six thousand square feet.
Wow.
So, you know, again, to pause and think how that might impact the people around that. We're also concerned about its proximity to the railroad tracks itself, you know, or we weren't sure whether or not, you know, we need some kind of permission from the railroad, or we can want their blessing per se, um, because there's a crossing there as well, and will a building block, um, people or cars from seeing, you know, maybe all kinds of trains.
Oh, we had a train right there, you know, on the other side is Skip Chambers here, a long ago, a few years ago.
Then you have the development down here off the Union, which is right at the corner of two eleven and Charles.
Right, right.
Um, that applicant has asked for the high bearings, this is going before the zoning board in the month. Then you have, out on Factory Street, you have um a.
Residential.
Multi-family residential, seeking more units on a very tough piece of property, uh, with huge slope dams in the river. And then you also have um Blue Stride coming back for their, they, they would, uh, their application was dismissed about six months ago, they're gonna come back, seeking to build the units that were approved, basically approved years ago.
Yeah, how many more slabs or pads was it there?
I think it's, I think it's three or four, yeah. Yeah, but it's still less, less units than what was originally proposed by about, I think, was it thirty eight?
Well, we denied it.
They started at like forty two and kept going down and down, so.
Yeah, we denied that. And we do have the Passer Park land back there yet too, right?
Yeah, you saw, yeah, the acreage that was given to the village, yes.
Does that connect to the water?
I think it does.
Could be a trail, yeah, could be used for a trail.
But then you have, and then you have approved but not built yet, which is um Chandler Lane, then you have the one on railroad.
And Raul.
Yeah, that's. And then you also have part of the Heffner property.
It's twenty two acres, I believe it was.
Which is part of the building.
Could you imagine if the village didn't buy the parkland they have down there and trail the path and all that stuff?
Could you imagine?
No.
Good decision.
Well, we could probably open it up to questions, because we're gonna be, they're gonna be asking the questions at the regular session, I don't have a problem with that because we finish up so quickly. Do we have anything else, planning board, or do you guys should stick around for the, the questions that were about to.
Well, that's about the property behind the PDD that Devon owns. There's another parcel behind that.
Right. Have they dispatched a fund and you buy some of that, I thought?
I don't know if he did or not, I haven't heard from him about that, but there's a parcel behind the PDD.
He's talking about the hay farm, right?
Yeah.
I'm talking about where the PDD is behind, yeah, the hay farm, I don't think they bought all, they have any, but.
I think they bought some of it, they bought a lot of land.
But the entrance comes in before sixteen to that property, that's actually.
I think they might have bought France Farm too, I don't.
I don't know.
He bought, he bought Rock's Farm, they got the farm over of, of Beaver Dam, Blackfeller, Bellers Farm.
Who did?
It's back there, there you go.
So, so there's, there's other pieces that are wide open, um, that are for potential development. And again, I think that's, that moratorium would be just looking at all of that. Okay, questions?
Okay, well, I tell you, I'm really surprised, it's a conversation, I'm really glad you're having a conversation, it's tough, I'll with. You had talked about the committees that you put together, but uh in my opinion, sometimes when you have committees, they kind of drag, you know, they don't institute anything over a short period of time, it's generally over a long period of time. The zoning issue is, I think, is a critical issue, and I think that needs to be addressed, and we had talked about this way back in November. And it needs to be addressed, in my opinion, as soon as possible. Once it gets to a committee forum, uh, you meet once a month or whatever it is, it's just, you know what I mean, it just, it, this process is extremely slow. All right, uh, so, I think, and also, we talked, when we talked about the zoning changes, we also talked about the uses in the zoning. And I just went over and checked probably eight things under the I one district that we could eliminate, I think, that this board would be very open to eliminating. And that's just the ones that you guys talked about earlier that really bug out, actually, so we don't need that either, you know? I think that needs to be part of it, and that needs to be instituted or developed sooner than later. Because that process will help you if you're in the moratorium.
Why don't you read the eight that you have, you have right now?
Yeah, I do.
For the record, so that the committees can look at that.
Yeah, we go right here, here's the.
Yeah, I have uh, storage yard quarry, municipal san- uh sanitary landfill, laundry plant, warehouse, uh fuel oil storage, uh general industry, dry cleaning plant. We don't need that either, those, those things, and those are just simple.
I really, yeah, most of them, I agree, but I don't know if you're gonna be able to cut out warehouse, uh, so easily.
Something to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, what's more, what's, what's preferable, uh, ninety thousand square foot ware- warehouse or three thirty thousand square foot?
So, in the moratorium law, uh, and I'll be more than happy to give you, I have a whole pamphlet of this, on moratorium law, so you can understand it in a simple form of the, the word. The moratorium that you're referring to, uh, I think it's a great idea. If you wanted to do a, a broad brush of a moratorium, that's a great thing to do, uh, you're really questioning three months, six months, uh, and a year. I believe the minimum is six months, that you shouldn't really be looking at a year, and then work your way down if necessary. So, and the, the one troubling thing that I heard, that I heard of many of you talk about, uh, you talk about ratables. Personally, ratables crack me up, the heat, the conserving areas, because once that plant gets in there, are they gonna go ahead, where do you think they're going, Steve? They're gonna go to the town IDA, they're gonna go to the county or the county IDA, and they're gonna get a ten year uh abatement, we know that.
Maybe, maybe.
Well, you know that's been a huge problem.
By all, they're gonna be, they're entitled to the four eighty five B.
Four eighty five B, but that does not affect.
Which is about twenty seven percent less than a ten year pilot.
The town, that's a state granted forty, uh, four eighty five B.
Well, certainly affects it too.
But it doesn't hurt the municipality directly, all right?
Sure it does.
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't.
It does.
The school is still gonna receive their full tax loan on four eighty five B.
That is the highest.
Wait, let him clarify, he knows a little bit better than you do, and maybe.
Well, rich food.
No, go ahead, go ahead, just take your point, then Kevin can.
It's the hi- the highest concern that every one of us as residents should be concerned about is the school taxes. They're the ones that get hit the biggest, unquestionably, it's not even close. Under the four eighty five B, maybe there's a few little meandering little fees, but as a great majority, the school district does not get hit on four eighty five B.
If they opt it out, if they did opt out, they get hit by it.
Many of them don't opt out.
Yeah.
Correct, so. The county that do opt out.
Yeah.
But my point is, uh, the overall point is that they're going to apply to one or the other, and as we know, via papers, the town IDA has been very, very lenient in granting the IDAs, so you have to be concerned about that and.
I would, yeah.
The policy, we're outside, uh, you have to be very concerned about that and not use the idea that the first year that that place is in built, that you're gonna receive all of a sudden this tax money, because I'll say they do not.
Well, do you think we're gonna get more than two thousand fifty five dollars in ninety six cents if they put something?
Is that how you wanna face it?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that's what we're getting now in terms of village revenue from the Alden Link KSH property. And, and again, I would not be in favor of giving any approval to a pilot and whether we have any say in it or not, I don't know, Steve would know.
We don't, but.
But again, I, I would certainly campaign against that, but I like to think that if, if the IDA is reasonable and a reasonable project goes in, I'm not saying the two warehouses and the two office buildings, but if we come to some agreement as to what's acceptable for that, I'd like to think we're gonna get more than two thousand dollars and change in terms of, of revenue.
Well, because of the structures being built, you're gonna get, it starts at ten percent, twenty percent, and it bounces up per year, okay? You can't base a project because you're gonna receive ten percent in what the value of that property is. I don't think that should, again, that's just me talking, I don't think that's a basis of granting any approval to anything.
But if they put a ten.
In other words, I believe they should pay the full vote.
No, I agree with you, I agree with you, they should, of course.
They probably should on a case like this, because they're coming here anyway. But if the converse gone, and I'll argue till, till we're blue in the face.
I'm not arguing, Steve would discuss.
We're discussing, right?
But now, let me just.
We're beyond the arguing, right?
We're your family now.
Example, County ninety nine, I never heard any complaints about all the businesses that went out there, and all of them had pilots to my knowledge. And many of them would, would not have come there without the pilots, just wouldn't have come there, some of them. And there's never an exemption on the land, never exemption on the special districts, and they're paying millions of dollars in taxes to Valley Central School District, millions of dollars. But nobody complained, but now with Medline and, and Amazon, there's a real big uproar, and a lot, and some of it deservedly so because of the, the size of the buildings and the proximity, especially Medline, to the village of Montgomery. But, you know, Legoland never would have come here without a pilot, twenty two year pilot, but you have to look at the converse, there's gonna be over eight million dollars in sales tax. Village Montgomery's sales, shares in that sales tax revenue, and there's a lot of other examples. But is that competitive in other states with pilots and other incentives from the states, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, New Jersey, et cetera, that lure them away from New York, and the cost of doing business in New York is the highest in the country. So, it's not just corporate welfare, it's, it's a trade off, but there's, there's a lot of good pilots, and not every business that comes into Orange County deserves a pilot. In Orange County, I don't sit on the Montgomery, just finish, well, let me tell you. I don't sit on the Montgomery IDA, some people think I do, I sit on the Orange County IDA. But we're changing a lot of our philosophy and rules, Kevin's the idea of attorney for, for Orange County, um, with motels. We're stopping most of the motel pilots or giving less pilots if they do. The Legoland motel, um, they're gonna get one because it's a huge hotel, excuse me, um, it's gonna bring in a lot of tours. But, you know, it's, it's a trade off, but pilots, all pilots are not back.
But, you know, I, and I agree with you, I know, they're not all that.
But I don't think that all warehouses or all buildings that come in are going to get them. And, and one example is on Bracken Road across from the town hall, that brand new building there. That was built without any pilots, according to the town assessor, and it's currently assessed at ten billion dollars. It's been sold three times since it was built.
Is that a good way?
Without any pilot, I'm not saying it's a good thing, but, but again, there's tax revenue coming from that building to the town without any pilots, that's all I'm pointing out.
Okay, that's fine, uh, just what you said about County Route ninety nine. County Route ninety nine was put there for those reasons that those buildings are there, four sixteen is not, Steve. That's where you're getting the pushback, because it's bleached down four sixteen and residents are not happy enough.
I agree with you, no, that's understood, but the zoning was there, I mean, it was zoned for that.
It is a special use permit, it's not zoned for it, it was a special use permit, all right, it's an industrial park, all right, that they decided to approve that went from three bays to two hundred and fifty bays, I mean, that's not good bays, but, but that's not the argument.
You know Medline was gonna build in the town of Montgomery years ago, I mean, before they went out to wave the hand, you know that? They were pushed out of the town of Montgomery years ago, otherwise they would have been out on County ninety nine, and they would have built out there, and it wouldn't have come this close to there. We do, I do take solace in the fact that the farm is closer to the village, so there is a little bit of that, I don't know if anybody else takes solace in that, but I do.
Well, you know where I stand.
And I'm not, and you haven't heard me really give any, you know, pros or cons there.
The, again, back to KSH, I think we just all have to be very careful, and it's very clear to me, and I think from the language that I've heard from this board, uh, just, you know, this past hour, forty five, or whatever it's been, is that it, it's not a fit for our village, it doesn't belong here. And uh, that's why we need to take care of whatever zoning rules we have in effect, and the uses in those zones, that needs to be done right away.
That, that, does Link own that, any of that at all, Walt?
No, I believe so.
Any more, Mr. Link came here and he tried.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Mr. Lincoln here, and he tried to, he was trying to get us to change that to residential. To get us to change that to residential. And I'm a pro, I'm just coming to the proposal to see maybe he wanted wood housing, he wanted glowing from housing, he wanted a whole bunch of different things there, we would not change. We would not change from industrial. He brought his son here to tell us that he had a secret buyer in Sullivan County, but he wouldn't give his name. A secret buyer that would turn that place into, into a gold mine. All we had to do was say, we're gonna give it residential. So I looked at him and I said, are you kidding me, you work on Wall Street, don't you? He said, yeah, I says, do me a favor, I said, buy stock in such and such, call me, I'll pay you Thursday if it goes up. And he goes, you're being a wise guy. I said, I'm being a wise guy, you want a secret admirer to come down here and just buy this property? So he threw a fit.
We got another public hearing.
Okay, just real quick, he threw a fit and he says, I might as well just give it to you, you remember that? And then he stormed out of here. So he's been down here many times trying to change that.
Yeah, he had a lot of different scenarios. Really, he's been to a wheat germ factory, because that's where he got the new bird, so. All right, sorry, I want you to close it, um, oh, that's, it's just a work session, so, yeah, we'll close it. Okay, we need a motion to open the public hearing. Uh, introductory local law number one of two thousand twenty. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, carried. The, uh, our own preflop paper filed. Okay, Kevin, you want to give us a synopsis or an overview of the.
Sure, so, local, introductory local law number I-one of two thousand twenty proposes to amend the zoning code to establish limitations on the amount of window signs that are allowed in business and industrial uses to limit it to twenty-five percent of the total window area of those premises. This has been an issue, I think, with the board for quite a while. And voluntary compliance hasn't, hasn't worked, so I think you're looking to enact it so that if you have a window such as this with four panes, one, one pane, twenty-five percent, one quarter of that could be covered with signs, I guess, that'd be open. If you have one big sign, it's twenty-five percent.
Or one, if it's two over two, like it's one whole panel to be covered.
Right.
Correct.
If it's, if it's, it's only twenty-five percent of the total window area.
Total one, so these two O-two, the two over twos are one window area, right? All right, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, Walt, move it up for, um, comments?
Steve, can you ask everybody not to sleep or anybody else?
Yeah. Yes, Karen.
I just, because I haven't been in on this discussion before, can you just talk about your rationale about why you want to do that? Yeah, the signs.
Because we want downtown in businesses to look nice and historic and clean in the village of Montgomery. We don't want them to look like a, a mess like you see in certain areas, you know, to see where they are. We have, you know, we have a two-hundred-and-ten-year-old village and we want it to look nice. And it's really getting with the Budweiser, not Budweiser, just any beer signs and, and tattooed things all over, you know, the whole windowscape. It looks like.
There's no window.
There's no windows. It looks like healthcare, you know? No offense, but that's, we should address this years ago, really. You know, even our signs are, aren't bad, but you go to Saratoga, Saratoga, all the signs are based on the building, it's beautiful, and a lot of other historic communities. Do you guys concur with any word?
I want to, I mean, that was something we.
You were on the HR, you did.
I mean, it was a big struggle that we had.
God, complains about the slowness, this was really slow.
I've been playing on the sign for years.
Any other comments, questions? Sorry, Karen, be so fluff.
No, no, that's okay, I, you know, I guess, I guess my question arises from, of all the things we have to concentrate on and, and so important in the village. I was surprised to see that, but, and, and I, I don't have a business, I don't, you know, so.
It's like neon signs, we try to get rid of minimized neon signs, and maybe you have some backlit signs here and there, and it's just, it's just really detracts.
Aesthetics, basically, yeah, thank you.
So, there's a building inspector, the info, oh, the, the force funds?
Yep.
Basically, right, Kevin?
Yes, you are.
Yes, you will be. Okay, no other questions, we'll close the public hearing.
Motion.
I like that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Ten minutes or so? Six minutes, okay.